So, uh, welcome to the planning board meeting for August twenty first, twenty twenty four. Begin with the pro-call of Paul.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Peter Roddick.
Here.
Kelly Paulson is not here. Mr. Bruce Davis is not here. Brian Malcolm.
Here.
Attention, we have one, two. We have six members present. And because we have people in the land will be, uh, sitting in. This is a vote. Do special things. Okay, the first, um, application is the application of K R A nominee trust. Free Center Street for a special permit. And this is for the, for the.
Hi, Tiffany Barfali in Board and Department of Street.
Uh, Keaton Abloh. Thirty-six Water Street.
So Free Center Street is in the downtown overlay district. For approval to the short-term rental for the three years. It's a single-family little house cottage. It's been running as a short-term rental since about twenty fifteen. We don't rent to anybody under twenty-five. We have a third-party management company. Everybody has access. They either all have neighbors or either have Keith's contact information or mine, or they have access to it. Um, next one please. So within this area, there's an inn about twenty yards away from where this short-term rental is. There's two parking lots, there's multiple restaurants, there's the newspaper, and then, um, multiple lots in the same area. So we're not kind, we're not in a residential and we're not in the downtown where the retail is. If you can keep going. So this is just the map to show you where Free Center is. The parking, it has a dedicated parking lot, that's that pink X, dedicated parking space, which is shortly further down the road. And then up at the top where you see the other circle, there's an additional parking spot if needed at thirty-six Water Street. The two properties run up to each other. Next one. So this answers all of the questions. Is it best that I go through these or one by one?
Probably best typically.
Just go through them. So it's in, it requires a special permit because it's in that downtown, um, overlay district B two. The, it brings in revenue to the town for number two, their request of use is essential or desirable for the neighborhood. It's not going to affect anything. It's been running, it's in an area where it's already businesses. Um, number three. There's no undue traffic. It's the same kind of traffic. It's usually one car, some people don't even come with a car. It will not overload any public works, um, drainage sewer or anything like that. It's a single-family house that has been there for a couple hundred years, I think we're at now. Um, the number five doesn't apply. Number six, the request will not impair the integrity or character of the area. No, it will not. It's a historic little house that's been there, as I said, for a couple hundred years. Um, number seven. No excess, um, strain on the neighborhood, anything like that with the character, because it's been spread into the character that's been there. It's in harmony with the rest of the intent in the area. And the last one is correct. It would be in the manner, there's nothing dangerous, there's no, we're not looking to change any, do any construction, anything like that. Next one. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from members of?
I think I missed, I don't remember any ordinance vote for more.
Yes. Remind me. So in the, uh, in the downtown or, or, or in the business district. Business district. Um, the, uh, the ordinance prohibits the use of a, of the first floor short-term rental. And the reason for that is it's really thinking about like buildings on State Street for something. Ground for residential use. So it's, so the ordinance, um, prohibits in the business district. This particular property is in the central business district, a little bit outside, it's not in the floor of the district. So it doesn't have that same kind of character. Mixed-use building.
Right, right.
And, and so the, uh, zoning point granted a variance from that.
Yeah.
So that's really not, what's not before us, two things that aren't before us. Are the, the first floor use, uh, because that's been granted by the zoning board. And then the failure to apply the timing that.
Okay, yeah. I just went wrong with that.
Yeah. It only applies in the business district.
Yeah.
That's right. I was just. Wait, did you clarify? Speaking to the criteria that you saw. I guess here as the city council. Uh, I'd love to stand. You process. Or, you know, um, some traditional suspicions, you know, other things like. Case, the devolve. In most cases, it's, it's the idea of for. But, you say that's.
Just wondering, Andy, um, could you go over, uh, just what the, the legal review was? And if there's any concerns from your department based on what was, what the response was from the legal review?
Uh, Andy, you may have mentioned referring you back to this. Now, I mean, yeah, um, so I can say in brief, uh, so this is. Um, the, there was a legal opinion that was the record. You know, with that, uh, that was in the record of the work field when they ran. The letter itself was basically getting that the two provisions are very precious, believe one being the date of application. Um, and one being the first floor component. Basically implying that both of those were used directions or applied to use variances. And that, of course, is because the city council went up a year back and, um, taking out, taking away this, these are be two granted use. Like, could be granted by the board, but no other. From the time of certain product. And that allowance, uh, which is um, was adjusted. So here, the opinion might be relevant because I do have to just to figure. So, um, I don't, can't say that I agree with that. With not so much that the board, that not to say that the applicant know that the board should grant the approval of variance. But rather than, I don't believe that the first floor component. Um, a use variance is typically whether or not that use is allowed. Use allowed in the district. So given that it's not really a question of whether use is allowed in the district, it is. The question is, is it allowed spatially in that first floor structure? Me that is more akin to a dimensional requirement, being spatial relationships. But, so, uh, we did have this conversation with council that involved, I think, you know, the letter, of course, the board obviously just like, while they did take that, you know, under advisement, they, they still felt that they were the granted zone, you know. But I, you know, I think the logic, they did not deal with the use, but obviously for that uh, recognize or saw that the user could not give you that. Uh, I can't say that I do that. In this rare, there's an instance, which is a difference between. Um, I also, um, while I don't think that, um, you know, at the end of the day, the deadline for the application is a actual use variant. Again, because the use of the district, that's the question, the question is what are the parameters? And this goes with the way that I would briefly describe that, um, the, yeah, use variance, yeah. Might be like hours of operation or some other provision in there that isn't dimensional and isn't the use being allowed in the district. It's one of the provisions that the applicant is supposed to provide. So here, um, I see the date of the application being in this other bucket essentially, um, not necessarily something the board has included for granting. Having said that, um, well, I don't, you know, have an issue with a short-term renter at this location in the downtown, to be fair. This is the unique structure. Um, and I don't foresee this structure, these are the near term, or the street gate have retail on first floors. To me, it doesn't seem to be in conflict with everybody, I think the council probably pressed. I got most people my understanding of it. Um, but at the same time, I knew no, in that process, it's council had for a three-year process, the offing recognition, you know, creating the parameters. That the investor category, uh, was of some sort of debate or extended time. And one of the provisions that seems to be substantive to that approval of the ordinance, provision allowing some investor units for a three-year period. Was that there was a deadline for an application, that they had taken care of the state previously and so forth, right? So those things are kind of in the ordinance. So while I do think that that is a provision, again, if I were a court of appeals member, I think that's a some of the fees that would cause pause, you know, there in that process. Anybody, because I only, only because I've been privy to that three-year process. Um, however, I also don't, can't say that I think that that's a use variance, meaning I don't think the board has granted it. So here we are today, um, the board's granted the relief of those provisions that the chair mentioned, and those are really on the table for here to, uh, you know, deal with per se. Because those are already decided by the whole appeals, um, in the context of the belief being granted to request at that time. And now you have the remaining typical requests for a short-term rent unit, which is not to be too in way, because this board, um, you know, the unique here of the board is, is, um, we're rarely looking at some of these permits, you know, you're triggered here because you're in the downtown, right? Yeah. Um, and you're not going to see another investor, for a unit like this, which is the, uh, if only the investor category. So here, this is really the only application you're going to see or a short-term rent unit as an investor, because that's what's coming to door, that's the only variant that they're granted. I, I won't speak to the board's rationale. Decision, but yeah. I don't suspect there'll be other, you know, relief granted for others down the road, of course, you know, we need to. But, uh, at the end of the day, um, you should probably be aware, you need to, if you're reviewing it, it's unique, you're probably only see this one. Um, and, um, yeah, so.
Yes, thank you. One, one other, one other question, just to clarify, the, the assigned parking space that goes with this, that's located, is that one lot away from the, the building?
Can you go to number?
Yeah.
So you can see where Three Center is outlined in yellow, just beyond, um, the inn. There's three parking spaces and one of them is dedicated. It's where that big pink X is basically.
At the bottom of the screen there.
Yes. And then the second spot, if, if we had guessed that near the second spot, which we have never had to use, up at the top is thirty-six Water Street where it keeps it. And there's two spots here.
Thank you.
One question I want to raise in the, to see whether they can put it in a a special condition, which is that, um, the, it's, there was a, uh, note, the zoning determination saying only one unit is permissible for operator, this is already applied for a unit. If a different natural person is legally operating owner slash trust, the case provided proof of legal authorization and operators can be contacted. Now, in our zoning, and remember we discussed this, operator means a nat- natural person, owner of record, joining. Is legally authorized to act in relation to the S T R U is the owner of second owner may be without limitation, an individual owner, owner together with trustee of a trust, a manager of an LLC or an officer corporation. So, um, what we have here is a little different. What we have is our attorney, which is not, none of the things that listed. I, I guess it would fall under the, the petition. So, um, I would like to ensure that somebody has made a determination, like, that, uh, that the power of attorney we have here is equivalent to requirements that we have in the definition. Um, and oh, I won't, like, I won't say what I think the condition should be now, or we don't. But I think that's just an issue. It is not, it's not any of the things that we consider. And so I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's somebody where there's, it's starting in for city attorney, legal counsel, um, has said yes. Anything else before I open this up to the public comment? In that case, I will open up the public comment. Anybody who would like to speak can come forward, just come on forward to the headband and microphone.
First thing about speaking real loud, I promise.
I see that, you don't be reported.
Yes, the. It's people out generally speaking, we brought people with really lovely.
Right?
You're, uh, you're good, really good. Thank you. Everybody's sort of behind that. So, I'll be speaking.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, good evening, Jenny Donaville, War Two City Councilor. Um, you mean my address, eighteen Jerry Street, right, of course. So, um, a couple of things I wanted to mention, uh, first, I am here in serious opposition to this applicant, um, being granted a special permit. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to make this CBA meeting, um, for reasons out of my control. However, I was able to review the entirety of the meeting regarding this application and the two variances granted. Um, so one of the things that I did hear that I would like to quickly comment on is the fact that this location is, quote unquote, not in a residential area. And I am here to, back to differ as the ward counselor, who is absolutely in contact with residents regularly in the ward, um, which, um, I, I also have enough to clarify after this, but, um, my point of that is that this is actually the most residential side of the street. There's no business in the center of the street. It's all businesses.
True.
If I'm not mistaken. Um, and I will have my time not interrupted, thank you. Um, it is not a fully resident, uh, fully commercial street. It is not the center of downtown. It is a tiny, tiny, very tight-knit neighborhood, side street, that happens to have a restaurant at the end and a longstanding actual inn. It's a block, all. There's a handful of homes. This is one of them. The rest are actually lived in by people who do have concerns about parking. They do have concerns about specifically on-street parking that they don't have. So the parking is an issue. Um, the fact that there is a lot of skirting around the barrier that the council put into this, um, is very disconcerting. The CBA was not aware, uh, I think a lot of things, because no one was there in, in opposition in any way. Um, the timing of the applicant, uh, you know, the, the, the piece that was relief of it failure to meet the timeframe, um, should not have been granted at all. That is a grave mistake on the part of the CBA and frankly, um, really a slap in the face of the city council in the fact that we really did put a lot of time into all of it. And, uh, this applicant was at many meetings, many council meetings, many, many meetings, all along the way, step of the way. Well aware, so I don't really understand any kind of, um, any kind of mistake or misunderstanding or misstep on part of the application being filled out in beginning of March, you know, whenever it started in March, is my understanding. And the application period started in the beginning of the year. So by my estimation, I, I don't, I, there's no good reason, there's not one, not a single one. Um, other than just skirting around the rules. And then we are now, so to discover that set applicant is skirting around the rules of having not one, but two investor-owned S T R Us through semantics. Um, this is a gross overuse of semantics in rules and whatever else is being leaned on. This is not intended by the city council at all. So I hope that you will do your due diligence. Please. And consider all that is to be actually considered beyond just what was, um, allowed through the CBA. And that there are residents who live there and, um, unfortunately, they're not able to be here, but they are, they are listed.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? And probably come. Seeing now as a little lose the public comment and we turn back to the comments or discussions.
Uh, one, one question for the applicant, the, um, planning, planning department has, uh, mentioned a couple of special conditions on this and you're are you, you're aware of those and, um, you agree with those as far as maintaining a valid S T R U license?
We have that, yeah.
And the fact of, um, maintaining the, the online ads to reinforce the conditions by the ordinance.
Yes.
Mr. Secretary, you don't have a license yet.
With the state?
No. To be clear, this is the, to be clear, bearing stuff parking here, there's still the local license.
Yes, we will do that, it's probably yes. Yes.
If you can't get a local license.
No, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I can have the state one, we are.
So just kind of following up, explaining, comment. Again, understand the concerns, um, unfortunately or unfortunately, we have nothing, no jurisdiction at this point over the ground floor use or the, um, or the belief filing. Um, and so we can only look at here, the special permit criteria in the, or this general special permit criteria. And the standards for, um, short-term relevance in the short-term section of the ordinance. And limited, what we can do. That said, um, I don't know if anybody else had anything before I jumped into this. Um, just, did you something?
So can you just go back to the power of returning?
Yes, that's what I was just gonna give you.
I want to understand my understanding of what power of returning is.
Right. So when we were, when we were, when this was being with, um, the ordinance set, um, it listed certain things. So if you were the owner of the property, you could, you could be the operator. If you were partner, if in the owner, in the ownership, you could be, you could be an operator. If you were trustee of a trust that owned the unit, you could be an operator. Or if you're manager of an LLC, should reach the unit, you could be an operator. In this case, this is none of those things, this is something different. And so what's being proposed is power of returning to somebody who's neither, none of those, has none of those rules. And so, um, as I understand it, maybe it didn't come in, maybe it wasn't time to do the, you know, the ethical legal review of this. So, um, it's unusual. It's, so it's unusual to begin with. It's also anti, anti-disruptive. You're not going to get another, this is the only one going to be in the city. Uh, so, so, uh, so it's unusual in that respect. Um, so to me, it seems like there were two directions we could go. One is we could postpone, continue the discussion to another meeting and ask the planning department to come back to this written documentation looking forward here and read in some detail. Or we could prove it subject to getting and so it seems like there was too much. Um, and so the two, two additional special subject, special conditions that I, yes. One is, um, the, the ordinance says that, um, that that the, the special permit, uh, for a, um, sorry, the special permit shall automatically expire June thirty of twenty twenty-seven and may not be extended by the variance of any of the so I would like to include that as a special condition just to reflect, say, that this special permit shall expire on June thirty of twenty twenty-seven. Let's, yeah. Just to reiterate.
To be explicit in this.
Yeah.
Just ask for clarity on so my experience with power of attorney is that you're granting power of attorney to represent you without actually checking in with you and, and the insert family. So you're saying that you are not the operators of this property and that you've granted power of attorney to somebody else in the operator?
That's right. So the, the property is part of an irrevocable trust. Um, so it is not me. It's actually another entity under the law, specifically not me, I can't have it. Uh, and so it was suggested by the planning department that not only, uh, that that's true. Um, however, that the ordinance says that if that's the case, you can't operate it and have that and another. You know, I can't be the operator, even though I don't own it, I can't operate it because I operate another one. So through power of attorney, this is the operator, period. Um, and that's the reality. Uh, she's been granted operator status to make every decision for the property.
So all the license, everything is in her name?
They had us put the trust as the name when we filled out paperwork, it's the trust and then find the contact and the option.
Yeah, you can't, the trust is the proper applicant, um, for this.
Changed that.
It's, it's the same as a person. Um, but it can't speak for itself and the ordinance suggests I can't speak for it because I operate another one. Hence, this is the speaker for it.
So.
I mean, with the, you know. Um, yeah.
So the, so what I was, uh, again, there are two ways to do this, but they don't come back to getting some kind of documentation. And so one way to do would be to say, to, if we, there's a motion to approve it, to approve it subject to the provision of written determination by the zoning enforcement officer, city attorney, city legal counsel. That the attorney in fact designated by the power of attorney is legally authorized to act as the owner of record set forth in the definition of operator expectation, DG two. And further subject to require, the change in the operator should require two. So, so we could either, presuming that we're going to move ahead of, um, we could either move it subject to that provision, or we could continue it in order to get, get that written documentation in order. So I will accept a motion in any type of, if there's, if there's a motion to, to make that motion, I would like to add those addition to conditions.
I'd like to move that we continue to, until we have opportunity to review the documentation that's been satisfied that it addresses.
I'll say an emotion.
Is there any further discussion? Um, do we probably want to continue to a date certain? So we don't, we don't have time. Right? Do they want to continue to sit down for a meeting?
The decision is that, that appropriate. Step.
I think, I think it should be a simple thing.
Yeah.
So it's not time, you'll have time to do.
I don't look at the time right now. But, you can't make it.
Mr. Brian just.
Oh, I just say, no, I can't be here that meeting. Sorry, I've got a few questions that I'll ask. I'm just, I'm, I'm getting confused about the aspect of, I understand that the home is in an irrevocable trust. But sold that home, where do the monies of that sale go to?
The irrevocable trust.
And the trustee is?
The trustee, I am the trustee, but I cannot take the money, I'd be committing a crime.
I just want to speak, right?
It's, it's not right. You, you can get a legal opinion on it.
Yeah.
Irrevocable trust. It's not the first, that's the idea.
Not the irrevocable trust, just the ordinance. I just feel like this is like a slip.
Yeah. So what is, um, let's take that over the front.
Because he does own one.
Right.
And the home, you purchased this.
Right.
And then you put it into the irrevocable trust. I just, I guess, I'm just.
We're going to get a little personal, when there was a divorce, the fact that when Keith and his ex-wife were going through their divorce.
Yeah.
Property was put into an irrevocable trust for the. Property was put into an irrevocable trust for the children.
Okay.
So Keith was assigned as the trustee, but it's irrevocable and the children are the beneficiary. So even if we decided to sell it, the money goes back into the trust and the children are the beneficiary. So anything that we do for making money, it goes into the trust and it is for them. Except for like money from the short-term rental is used for maintenance, you know, routine maintenance, we don't do anything extravagant and it's all there. Keith has multiple properties in that irrevocable trust for the children. And that was part of the proceeding that both him and his ex-wife did.
So I guess because this is a three-year window and this will not come up. I, I guess I feel somewhat settled about it, but you can see how this could become.
If it were not, if it were not so limited.
If it were so limited, we could see this pop up.
Well, just comment that it would be extreme, most people wouldn't seek to subterfuge by giving away. A property in order to have a three-year Airbnb conducted in it.
That's what I'm saying, because of the three year, but, but I don't agree that some people would do that for the long game if it was not this three-year window. Be a very good financial plan for family.
I guess it could be, I guess it could be.
Okay, so is there any more discussion about the motion? I mean, concerned, yes, Brian.
Other than procedurally, does it make a difference if I do not be here on next meeting?
Well, it's a good point, we have, we, we have six people here tonight, we have five people or, or actually Charlie could do it. And Charlie and Jeff.
Maybe a different.
So is there anybody else who knows? So we'll have at least five, which is enough to hopefully six or seven. No further discussion than all those prepared for the motion? Any appeals? To continue to.
Thank you.
Okay. The next application is the application of former authority, external drive for the special permit.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. Uh, yes, so. Been a resident now for three years, my wife and I are actually dating, we want this house, that would be our star house, got two boys now. And as you guys know, property, property values have gone up a lot and interest rates are high right now, so they expand to get a little more room to our house. This is kind of what we're.
Anything you want to add before we get into this?
Um, I guess just to breathe, um, in the general context, I think if I could just plot a certain, seem like a perfect. Great for, there's plenty more to, you know, you know, types of issues or new to this project. We know, just a quick summary, we know that this neighborhood, that some others that, you know, you might see it could be developed in the O S R D and the one that I would reference is the. Uh, Hollywood Woods, uh, building, I think is, it well, it has a sort of. There are slightly larger lots, they actually like giving something to a lot. We know. This is a neighborhood, it's right there. But, uh, you know, years in progress. Correct, it would be quite a place. Earlier development that. So here, essence, he provides the board has originally this. Is, um, and it doesn't, but the O S R D is the, uh, planning board has the ability to grant a waiver reduction. We see the developing originally. Open space areas being reserved. The lots are being made smaller in size, and the setback being made smaller in size. And so one of the things that happens is there's essentially a judgment call along the way with the planning board during that initial permit process. As to whether or not the, you know, composition of the spatial engine is still, you know, viable for that neighborhood being created in this case. You know, if the board here grants relief, that's, you know, being requested for lots and dimensions. Rather than having to go over the zone for appeals, it's more to produce those, that's the relationship for the neighborhood. Um, thereby in that process, allowing more of the space around it to be preserved, that's kind of generically sort of what's happening. Um, so here in essence, these are smaller lots in size, tighter, you know, way. Uh, as you sort of drive through that neighborhood, it's obviously here where, um, this is not a change that can be just signed off by staff. See, they're very small, you know, adjustments that can be approved, um, as a minor residential apartment, this is not one of those. Basically going beyond the, um, relief this. So it has. Um, in that, it is sort of like a, you know, that is sort of like that. Here we go, if all of it goes beyond that, we'll do that a little further. And so the board has decided to give your okay with that, um, in this, in this prime, that's, it's interior, that's all it, um, not really affect the public. But also to consider, you know, what this, if other folks want to do the same. Here in essence, you have, you have to decide, almost as if we're back in the middle part of the process, is this spatial, uh, you know, we will. All exactly, you want to, you want to lots on the, um, open space side, we have sometimes door drive street, um, today, I think we're talking like. Somebody else. Yes. There wasn't, I think at the time, there was a process. Plus the effects, yeah. So, here, this might be, we buy. To reach an offer on only because they give that much, I think, it's already, you know. You did commit at the applicant, it's obviously, we don't have any. Present, uh, but we, we did issue a flag that we didn't, oh, here. Or use that. Is there further to believe that could be here?
So.
We are, the, our two houses, they exactly where.
You, you remember the public?
Uh, yes.
Also, where do you, where do you talk about? So, uh, we've had, just to kind of back up, we've had a lot of difficulty getting information. And, um, so if you follow what has happened. This whole area was approved with ten-foot utilities and. And, and, um. If your plan shows utility easement, it doesn't match what we. And we have been. I wouldn't say asking, I would say pleading with the developer to come up with. Final as-built plan showing what the easement really are in, for whatever reason we want to. So, um. I have a lot of difficulty with sunroom that is shown as being on top of the easement. That's a, that's, that's a big issue. The other thing was, as Andy said, we have twelve and a half, you're normal. And I had understood it, it was actually on the, on the open gap, placehold.
I, I did, I did.
What's that?
I didn't know what it is.
Late this afternoon.
I have, I uploaded it, smaller width in terms of, uh, from ten, twelve feet to ten feet.
Um, well. I was looking for.
I put in the attachments just on the general apartment, so. It should be now, thirty-three, twelve foot and stuff, or maybe.
There's no follow-up. There's no follow-up.
Is that, that, it's, yeah. I mean. It doesn't appear that they opposed you, did you?
Yeah, when I went back in there, it pulled up again, so.
Yes. Yeah. And the other, um. So, so that was a concern, I guess we want to make sure we started, but, um. So I really would, I would like to have. Some documentation of where the easement really is. And, and for the utilities, almost, that's it, if I understand. And so it is wrapping.
Yeah, the electrical comes in off the street, basically parallel with the property line on the back there, it doesn't come through that way. It comes in through the, the.
It comes.
It's marked up there right now because of when they came back the hardline, the downstairs.
So it's coming, it's coming between you and the lot to the north.
Uh, to the south. So it's like where the existing deck is right there, you're looking at that, the property comes in, the power line comes in from the street.
Yes, right, right.
From left to right.
And I knew that, and I, and I knew that because I actually had a, a plan showing underground electric, uh, line. But we, but there was never an easement proposed for that, so, you know, it's one of these things we really have to, it really is.
Yeah, I know, because the ass comes in, uh. North to south, uh, through the front, basically.
So, um. So my concern is because this is partly, you know, on you, but it's really, we, we, to come up with. Information, maybe you have information showing where the easement is, showing documents.
We're not in the registry yet.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a problem, I was looking in the registry, they used to try to find it. So, uh. I think we would, we, we can, we can discuss this further. I think there are a lot of questions, are there other questions?
Just, just to clarify. Utility easement is, is the, the loop of utilities.
Yes, sir. Well, it is, it's a loop that was proposed at the time, I think what the opposite says.
That's, that's the easement. It's a connection that does.
Right.
Nice.
Certain is. Do that easement. But in that, all of them.
Yes, yeah, just to protect the other. Yes, oh.
Yeah, and as far as, um, information from any of the neighbors or other. In the documentation, is that the only one that? Submitted, I'm sorry, I have other, in terms of, it was just number thirteen?
There's a letter support. Another one came in, that's eleven this morning, yeah. Number, number sixteen.
Again, for us, we have to have the two.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Jamie or Brian or whoever.
Is there, there is an association for this, is there any, anything from the association?
You have a question to the association?
I, I'm one of the trustees, but I, they're all aware of, this is why I'm one of the trustees signing the letter that they have in the board, you know, these are, but they have names signed up as well.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I have, I have signed up from the agent.
Okay, so you'll, you'll upload that too?
That should be in there too.
Um, what I see is a letter from you to the reserve, H R A, Anthony.
Yes, Anthony, Anthony's were aboard.
So it's asking for the opposition, I don't see a letter with the opposition.
Okay, all right, uh, I will, yes.
Just one minor question. Somewhat unrelated, but I'm looking at your site plan. And on the sunroom. And it seemed like there are other changes.
No, this was just, I just pulled this from the plan that we got from the developer, just to have. So when I went and sent them out, the architect just used the existing plans that he had in there.
So which is the accurate representation of the data?
Uh. It would be the first, the first page. Yes.
On the site?
The existing, that, that's where it is right now, it's actually shifted back this way.
So that's, that's different than what's.
Yeah, so it basically where the proposed sunroom is. The corner, the bottom corner of that, the door going out is, that, that is shifted over to the right.
So explain that again?
So the existing deck on the back is just basically, it comes off that bottom right corner of the property, yeah, so it shifted over that way, yeah.
Then there's no stair.
There are stairs, the stairs go the opposite direction.
Yeah, this is a HVAC unit.
Uh, the HVAC unit is, um. Uh, up further, it's on the side of the house where the proposed sunroom would be, I would, I would relocate that. Yeah, I would relocate that back to the back of the sun, off the, off the corner of the house.
It would be good to just get all of this.
Okay, I would, sure.
And I think maybe for clarity. Uh, the revised plan, maybe not include the four plans, I'm not sure what four plans help us.
Um, I guess you guys have a lot of provisioned that. She will have the other documents, you know, apart from. This, you just receive all that. Why people see this.
Yeah, I see, I do it all, so I appreciate it, and you can see that you guys can grant me, I just try to, to get plans done for this was. Uh, not inexpensive, but there are more expensive options out there as well, so I've tried to, in the most cost-effective way.
So on the, on the, on this plan. We have the two, um, dash lines. And there's a. There's the word utility easement next to the, or.
Yeah.
So is the, I'm unclear what. What the internal, the in, interior, that the.
I don't, that, these were just the plans that. So it's because they most accurately to line up and represent what the as-built is for our house.
Absolutely, for the locations, but I hear, it would be, be to read both of those lines, that means the needs and bounds of the easement, yeah.
So you're thinking that the easement is bounded by both of those dash lines?
That is based on typical line types, not any.
That's what I can actually see.
Being of that, now, if it means something differently, you know, compare the plan, or provide the original document, they should have no play by, but that's how this.
You're right.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand it, I guess what confused me was the fact that the word utility easement was outside.
I, I understand, yeah, no, I'm just taking that into account, yeah.
So just to clarify, so you mentioned the developer, but you, you own the property, does the developer have any other responsibilities? Have they turned the roads over, is that?
Not yet.
Then, well, first of all, the new streets will not be public, this is a singular, uh, private, basically, you know, shared private.
But is it turned over to the HOA or is it?
We received, they turned it over two months ago.
Okay, so then the utility easement would be, if it's a true utility easement, you could get that from National Grid, because what they believe the easement is, is what the easement is, it's not.
Or, or.
When it gets reported.
Yes.
Is that what might be for truck access, you don't know what they.
The presumption here, it's not the same, because, right, the presumption here is this might be a letter, but that could be, I, I could actually, there's a gentleman that have a good. Unusually scheduling.
Well, the schedule plan that they have in the, in the registry, which has been, when it calls.
Yeah, if it's a national grid plan, they're not the type of plan, and we would have a lot of accuracy.
Well, I spent all day with National Grid today, they have accurate plans, they have rights and permits group, they know exactly what their rights are, so they don't crack on your property. They don't break, so.
No.
National Grid has, they do have.
The prob, part of the problem is we don't have an as-built. And we're trying to get. With, with, with this. And with, um, the locations of utilities, a lot of the utilities that were shown on the approved, so there's a plan in special permit. Are not located in the E S T. Yeah, so we really, we don't have a lot of problems getting that information.
And I, and I can see all that, the confusion of what the drawings are, the drawings, but there is a. I would argue that there's a legal document that the utility has, National Grid has, that believes they have rights. And that's the one you could acquire, because that would be the most definitive. If, if something was built on it. They would have the legal right to say, no, that's, that's an easement I'm supposed to have.
And so I.
That's also, that's the most clear, because the developer, they can. Anyone can make lines in.
Right, yeah, and so it would be very helpful to have that. And have that transferred to the site. And to have the, the word.
And, and that's what I'm saying, as the homeowner's property, if you say you. There's an easement there, you have a right to ask them.
Yeah.
Right, that's a direct.
That's right.
Connects between you and. Which might shut someone, now you're grounded in the. Their plan is different than the site is, right, and with, with.
Yeah, I think, and, and I, all I can say is just some of that, and if I, well, I, I think National Grid certainly knows where the utilities are, they actually. Line themselves. I have had sort of mixed bag experiences with the accuracy and details of the plan that they have always applied to, sorry, and whatnot, so all I can say is. Well, they certainly can locate the utilities and information there, and they might be easement or some line that, or general in nature, give a schedule plan that preferences with any grant is right for an easement. Um, I have not often seen National Grid sell property with the type of plan here that we have, or something like this, so. All I can say is I wouldn't go forward with the assumption that they will be as concrete and clear as we hope. Um, and I just, well, I think that's, you know, clear.
So the engineering plans that you see that you may run into, there, there's a legal, there's a whole rights and permits division.
I'm aware.
Right?
Yeah.
Don't happen.
Yep.
Now, it could be wrong, it could be disputed. Alls I'm saying is.
It exists.
Agreed, agreed. I just, I think of that information, I, I don't know how that information will be displayed, is what I'm saying, on that plan. So, for relating to this, yeah, and this is why, obviously, you originally assumed the developer itself. They thought by things that. Yeah. This didn't happen here, because they write, so. All I'm saying is someone will have to translate whatever that schedule. To, to this plan.
Yeah.
Or we get that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey. As it relates to the site too, I'm sure you know it's.
Yeah.
There's actually two, it looks like there's two like.
Those are for now for Comcast and Verizon to run their, uh, utilities in the house there, so they ran it by the way, uh, basically. On the property, that's both houses, they're just empty conduit, um, obviously being Comcast going through one, there's no Verizon, I don't have Verizon, but through the other one as well, so. They, they basically hug the power line that comes in Main Street.
So that, that, that actually kind of answers my next question. Where, do you know where the property line is in relation to the curb, probably, cause it looks like that's about eight feet in.
Uh, the property line is the markers that we have in the. Pictures that I can get are, like, they're one and a half off the, the property line, basically.
So that, I mean, I think that just goes to show that some precision on where this stuff is, is.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll go out to public area.
These are both of the, the, my neighbors as well.
Cool.
As far as, um.
Maybe you can speak, identify your name, your name and your address.
Doyle Drive, directly from.
Okay.
As far as, obviously there are challenges with. The easements and stuff, but as far as. Steadic and. Abutting neighbors and taking away from green space, I'm in favor of. Uh, some of the.
Uh, Thomas McTeague, I live at nineteen Doyle Drive. So I'm, I sort of look right at this backyard area, um. I, I don't know what specifics, if you have questions about what you're trying to improve based off of, but. Um, I'm fine with how it looks. I don't think it take away from any green spaces, a ton of kids in the neighborhood, so. There, there's no shortage of that, with that garden itself, the kids typically are playing. Their sort of front driveway area anyway, so that's not a space used by the kids or utilized by the neighborhood in any great extent, so. Also a favor.
What else? Period of public time or closed public time? And. Any further discussion, explanation?
That's just, just a final question. So the approvals that you've gotten. The twelve foot.
Yes. Yes, and I did put in, which I will try to upload again, what is a. A revision or alternative for a ten foot wide. Uh, sunroom, just in terms of, you know, just, they go illegal. Going to work in terms of like what I potentially get approved as well, uh, to bring that closer to, you know, off the. Uh, the setbacks and then away from the property line themselves, just to be able to give some indication of what, what my.
Just another question for Andy, um. It's unclear, um. It isn't clear, um. So. Terminating. So the way it's written says. Honeyboard of the authority to grant reductions setback. If they determine that it substantially furthers the purpose and intent of this order. Yes.
Yeah, and you're, that is, I think, yeah.
And so then it says. The district uses the R two dimensional thresholds. May reduce by fifty percent. Then it says twenty-five feet over two, it's twelve and a half. What minimum front yard setback. Proposal. I see. It's a period of this. Twelve and a half foot minimum front yard setback. It should be period, this proposal is. Means, on that last line there?
Uh, I, I want to before this on a committee. The idea here is that the ordinance has language in it that allows people. Said, you know.
Which is all and a half percent.
Probably have to. Just all that.
Yeah.
Well, that, these are the default that. But, 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 further. Or, so, allowed to do a going in first, if you find the, the, yeah.
Oh, so, so in essence, the way we should read this is to begin with the second. Say, the F L O R V uses the R two dimensional. And they reduce by fifty percent, which gives twelve and a half permanent front yard. And then we say we have authority. Further. If we determine that it's substantially for, for this. And that would.
Correct, and I, well, I don't know. So, I think there's. Maybe go quite. Um, but, you know, yes, things are. All the way, so I, I don't know whether the. Given that we sometimes have. I feel that you would have been treating something here that, you know. When we evaluate. Here, uh, I think it is made point here is that. Well, the, one might have perceived even going to twelve and a half feet, which is the fifty percent that's actually codified by the ordinance, as things are like. You know, based on that's reasonable, right, that's okay, it might be reasonable because it's classified, they weren't in. Going lower than that. Changes going beyond that, really should come back for it, unfortunately evaluate by its own. Uh, you know, whether that's helpful with that, you know, in the context of the bar, it really, you know. Your dissection, sort of, uh, uh, what, uh, what are there, but it's also saying you can't.
So just one more question that's to clarify the basis. If the applicant was proposing it at twelve and a half. But. Would they have to read for us?
Um, well, the bottom line, I guess, the zoning administrator could have to make a determination for this, we'd rather do, um, and should we do typically consult in, in situations like this? Uh, my indication and suggestion would be actually for the board to do it, uh, the context of the big up project, uh, would be that's. So, you know, it's a type of neighborhood, right, so. Um, and while the, the, the big, the main, this, like, we, we, but, um, but I think because of the tightness of the neighborhood, I think, um, I think I'd like to share. Because the sign up of the offices, they're going to remain as directed. I, I would not probably pull up with it as that. Right back.
So it's, it would be a special permit, even if it were within, even if.
This is where, where the question is coming to me. I would write it back to the board, uh, only because of the entire nature of this. All of it, it's, oh, it's, it's like quality of the.
Yeah, I understand, but I just didn't know whether, you know, actually whether there was a. Clear line.
There's not a clear line. Yeah, and that's why, um, you know, we're. We sometimes think a little more. Usually we got to be reading more of it, usually that, either one, modern model. But, yeah, some lines where we just, we try to get reference. The boards, you know. Where it's really just not readable to expect. Well, like normally in the case of like a, another department, in that, you know, like, for this, everything that was being proposed, project, and then they give it to. Deal. Uh, and, and someone came back. Use all of this. Like. Minor. No, Jamie doesn't believe it. We might do that minor fee as being a. Be done. If it was going. I will, I can't see how the board. So this might be a bullet that happens. You want to be honest. Be an option, I might be the, the board, what the sound. You hear that this, you want. Um, you know.
And, and would that change if another applicant, another homeowner came in? And asked for. A sunroom.
If you're saying that. Same sort of.
Wouldn't be a precedent, so, like, when you said you did it before and.
So that, that's why I say, again, I don't. The figure. I think, frankly, this. Most of all, this guy, we got to do a variety of different neighborhoods. You need a proper fact, you know. They're making closer. You know, that's okay, um, so that's why, partly the homeowners, obviously, you know. For, side of you. You were the authority originally approving, you know, the, the, ultimately, woods. The every product. These are all examples of those, these. The, uh, well, the open space areas. All of the relationships of the structure. Which is. Case to get these private.
Yeah, and, and I'm more focused on this particular H O A, so now we're deciding something, we're going to modify. reduces a setback.
It's only, it's only five minutes slot, right, so the question.
And all your.
No, I'm seeing there's been, since the developer has sold any, other, uh, owners have built some rooms and other, you know, uh, additions on, in this property as well. Just on the outside of the. The way that this is developed, so we're on the inner circle, which are smaller lots, the outer, outer circle part of this has longer lots, so.
So in those cases, that. What I'm trying to figure out is the precedent, and how, how do we approach it, that's the question.
Yes, just to be clear, I, for this argument, I think I'd be very. More recent, but not a lot of people. Um, but I believe that some of those is, is what the addition added after the developer. Those might be instances in which they were, there was. Rough, like, you allow, you know, so some of those may not be coming to the board here, so it's, it's a little bit. A little bit actually have a trigger to come to you because they were. Wasn't after.
And we had, we had two things that came to us. One was the. Sponge.
Yeah.
And the other parts. Deck that was enclosed.
Right, yes.
And, and it wasn't. They're both on the backside, probably the open space. Only the pool where the back of the open space.
Right. So, apparently. These are, I'm looking at those because they. Lot of the open space area.
And you also, in the case of the pool. We caught something. That hadn't been, it was, it had been allowed, it was built, it wasn't, it didn't kind of wasn't.
In that case.
Yes.
Yeah.
What did you have?
See, it was like when we were building the house, a sunroom was. We opted on to at the time, just because of, we were spending a lot of our free space, so we didn't think. The. Our, my thought was, okay, once we get that, bro, you know, it's, you know, moved in, everything else like that, and so we considered a couple of years as well, too, so. That was part of our bill sheet, and. We thought, no, this.
No, I appreciate that, and I, I'm just trying to get a scope of how we do it here.
Yeah.
Right, so that, it's really, you know, often what happens, you know. You approve something, and then somebody comes in six months later and says, well, you improved that.
Yeah.
Why don't you prove that one? And they're not always quite the same, they're similar. And then the fact that you have an H O A, at least you have some governance that says. You know, what's, what's allowed. That's, that, that's the way you put it, but I was fascinated with that discussion about what's the fork in the road where it comes.
Right, right, and, and I'm sorry, each of these, those are these are a little bit different, right, you know. Uh, in terms of like, I think we know, it, you know, impressive, like, how that's, that was, only would we basically add it, maybe one modification for a lot, but it wasn't like. Edition, I don't recall, but, um, there wasn't really much that's happened with that at all, and in the case of Evergreen, we actually had a very detailed discussion about the whole, you know. Max. Next, walk to, running. So. Be sort of like. This one here.
Okay.
One, Jamie, this. When there's, if there's, just to ask, uh, in terms of the. Front, you know. We're saying that applies to both elevations that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, two things that might be helpful to clarify. One is if anyone knows, including you or any. If, cause some of these out, some of these did have. One was a deck. Do, do we know for sure, yes or no? If the developer put. Gave you the option, if they have the approval to do it.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find out too, um. I. I'll be very transparent with you. I think that they put them on the bill sheets for that purpose, but then they, that they only for the outside part of the development. Just to be very clear with you guys, that's something that we learned.
And what you, what you show on this plan. Is almost identical to what is on the crew site.
Yes. Yes.
So that's, that's, you know.
But we, we were unaware of that, in, in our bill sheet, which I'm assuming is the bill sheet that everybody got. These were your options and stuff, so, and in that bill sheet was a sunroom. Yeah, and the, the difficulty here, I think the two things that have been difficult, maybe perhaps, what is more on the city side, which is that we have seen some things that were built that were different than originally approved plans, which has deviations in this development, right, fortunately, so on the project. Um, that, you know, we may wish along the way, that we also, uh, um, and I think perhaps what we're seeing here, and this happens with other developments, you're saying. Where it might be that the developer is representing something, that the option is either approved or reliable and so forth. And unfortunately, that's not a vote that we sometimes hear from, you know, we've been told this, this is the case, we have, actually not the case, like, we, that, that's not according to the record to be on the file or. Uh, or if I was specifically not, or any of those, so. Um, but unfortunately, there might be, you know, a disconnect between what's made by the city versus what, you know, the bill sheet for the homeowner, and you, and the units. Versus what might have actually been by the city, so I can't, uh, I might have to call it each and each lot where those things are approved and checked. See, it's been Jennifer, was the fact that the outside properties would still stand were. Viable to get those built, uh, through the permitting process, the people, myself included, on the inside, or not, because of losses.
So I have a follow-up question for you, and. Because you were willing to go down, and be, and you may or may not have to anyway because of easement issue, right? Did you consider doing what at least one other neighbor did, which is using the deck area and doing that?
So.
Cause it's a lot easier to kind of.
Yeah.
Vision or, or allow even a side yard setback that's quite narrow compared to the front.
So, the reason I wanted to do on that side is that that's the street side, and then I have another neighbor behind me, and that's the property with that. Is the fourteen F B, and then their property starts there, so we would be technically even closer to the house behind us, if I'm going to do a sun. The back of the house, so you can see it there.
Oh, and they're very.
And they're very close as well, too, so that's why I thought, on the street side there, which if you're looking at it, is on your left hand side. Uh, I said, there was some stuff. Yeah, so that's where it is there, so that's why I, I wanted to build it off that side, which is basically. If you consider it, that's my front yard, side yard, you will, putting it there. Uh, and then Danielle lives in that house right there, and Andy lives in that house right there as well.
I live on the. The one that.
Yeah, that one's the bottom one. Andy lives in the top. And the top, right, but, yeah. Thinking just in terms of we went off the back, then I wouldn't have any backyard either, too, I, two young kids and just for the fence up. Uh, I need to be able to corral them somewhere, so. Uh, that's why I wanted to be able to put it off the side to get. Give us a little bit.
So, um. We already asked you to come back for information.
Sure.
Um, and the information, I've written that, and maybe some others. One is, you know. Detail about easement. Including where it is on the site. What it says. Uh, the second thing is adding your option with the ten foot setback. You know, try to be.
Yes.
And, and with that, I. Um. I don't know. Looks as if. That would still be within the.
Yes.
Look at that issue. And then the third thing is getting your HOA. So. I don't know if anybody else has anything else they'd like to see. But if if we, if those are the things they wanted to see, what would be reasonable you to. Uh, to come back to this.
I can get that. I mean. I think I would ask you for your contact national grid to see if I can, you know, go up there and find that information. Uh, I need those two documents I could have tomorrow.
Okay, so so we could. In that regard, uh, continue this to this.
Possible, um, before the content. Do we know? Need for like a strong motivation. Wouldn't necessarily.
We haven't seen it, so we don't know. And I think we really need to know that the. It would help. Well, yeah, because if if we, so so we have a. So if we had a ten foot. So we are. Here, here. You know. We're not, there's a little bit of.
Yeah, because they were two feet over this, basically.
So so we, I mean, I think the thing is, we were. If we thought, if we thought, if the ordinance says twelve and a half feet. So and then we're talking two and a half feet. Intrusion that. Fourteen. So I think that's.
Oh, not that I have. Back, but.
Yeah. Concerns about. Uh, if they, if they were to come back with. Yeah, again. Assuming that it's it's legal according to easement. Assuming the HOA. Is there a concern about asking to? I assume you don't. So, uh, is there a concern about having to come back to the next year? Or to be of other concerns beyond that? Right? As I say, I I don't know.
Oh, sorry, it wasn't. Not even the governor need for.
Well, it seems like, it seems to me like the big question, I mean, the plan is done.
Yeah.
They, you're going to get the HOA. Um, so the the thing that we do, the only thing that could cost time and money is getting the information on easement.
Yes, and then I just would have them. As we discussed, it's either if I can get it from National Grid or I can get it from the developer, it's what the ad built is. I don't, and you even said yourself, you're having trouble getting that information. So. I just wouldn't want to put that on title either, you know?
So I guess what I'm thinking though is if. If we came back and the and the easement line removed closure to the street, we had less issue.
So can I just ask, just for the applicants, because there's a potential miscommunication. I don't think there is, but just in case, just so there's not. You said ten feet. Do you mean you're building back to eight feet or?
No, I pulled the the width of the four sunroom from twelve feet wide to ten feet.
That's the.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question.
Because that's, that only makes the easement eight feet, and that's what I was worried about with this communication.
Yes.
And that might still not.
Yeah, because if I, if I were eight feet off the easement, it would only be like a. Five O Y. Sunroom, which would be cozy.
Uh, well, I was. I was interpreting it as intruding in the use.
Yes. But you're saying going to be four feet in to two feet over. So to the potential, so now they're going to be still four feet in the east, not two feet. When you said two feet into the east, what triggered me? Like, I think we might be miscommunicating.
Okay, maybe, I don't know. Sorry, I don't know where that line is actually. Right, that's, because actually that line looks like it's.
Yeah, there's no markers. There's no indication of what's with the, or that is.
But it looks to me, I mean, there is no indication, but it looks to me like the easement line goes two thirds through that twelve foot. With, which I mean, there's four feet to the right of. Plus six feet makes ten feet. That's that's how.
You're talking about eight feet or slightly smaller residential room. Is that even work? No, I'm saying we have. If we can figure out if there actually is even a utility easement there, and if if I were still being the the width of the sunroom ten feet instead of twelve E Y. And say.
Okay.
So those three things basically is that if there actually is even a utility easement there, yes or no? And then if it is, if I'm being comfortable proving that I'd be two feet over instead of four feet over. And or now being, uh. Six feet off or eight feet off of the twelve and a half foot setback as opposed to.
You're suggesting that the whole quick dimension shown on the plan would be reduced to ten.
And the distance from the building. Right, yeah.
And the threshold issue is still where's where's he? Like, we have to, we just have to know that.
No, I understand. I mean, like you said, we, I don't have the ad built. If I had the registry deeds and the co-ferment, okay, this is where the easement is. Said it was there or not there, that would be a much easier decision than knowing if it is or is there. So.
So first, what is the words? Delusion. I would, I would move that we continue this. Uh, the information is. I was gonna suggest that. That's only, only the concern about that.
Yeah, easement, yeah.
I think what Andy was saying. No easement, and I get the HOA letter. A window or be potentially proving that, or is it not worth it?
So, um. And and for me at this point, it is. Need to know. But I don't know. On that question.
So 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 what you just said again?
If I say contingent on me getting those notifications and uploading, so. Uploading plans that show that the sunroom width is from twelve feet to ten feet wide. That the utility easement is or is not there. And then the third one being approved from the HOA. If those three things were in a lea, in agreement, is there any, um? Is there anyone here to object to that?
And I guess the 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 basic question is. Is is a summer. Except.
Yeah, I, I, I get to valid question. I just, because we essentially have you be deciding that at the second meeting, if we already know that that wouldn't be viable, we can conceive that. Or, you know, if the easement is gone, it's not relevant. If you're not okay with it, it seems better to mitigate now the setback when it's on the application.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing that comes to my mind is that. If in that unique condition, if there are other units that can, would be possibly. Agreeing to other properties in that area that want the same.
This is, this is a decision only for the typical law. I understand if there was, um, in in other residences, again, I don't know, like, one of them uniquely, whether or not they were like, classification with other, you know, deckers. Here it's approval, but here in essence, we'd be routing it and they like that back, you know, that's.
Correct, but you know how it works. Someone comes in with the. The next property and says, like, I want an eight foot and I just approved it here.
Yes.
The question is, it's the eight foot.
Yeah, I, there's not a legal precedent. There's certainly the discussion about whether or not that's spatially oppressive and then, you know, or argument for like, fun, that'd be equally reasonable of another block if they're going to use apples to apples. But each of these lots is a little bit slightly different and in ancient, then you still would have to be, you'd have to complete authority and would have to make that decision uniquely on that occasion.
I think I'm the only other resident. And I don't.
Well, it's not just the sun, it could be somebody who wants to.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I didn't look at, I I was thinking about that too. There there are, I think, three or four on Coby Park Lane that don't do that. But I think that would be an even higher standard than an internal brick. So I, this is one of maybe only two that possibly could have something like this.
It is private.
Yeah, apparently the nature of the street is adjacent. So Coby Park Lane, I would. What the greater concern to that. I think it's. But I still, but we, I'm likely confused. With another applicant, that's, you're right, that's, that's all.
It's not a go. I don't think it's a lot.
If you look at the other houses that are inside the circle. Uh, the two other ones are basically the same size as the bigger houses. I'm, one of Andy and I actually see that share the same floor plan. We're in the same house. And then the two, the house behind me and the house left of Andy are, yeah, affordable as well. So. I don't think anybody else, unless. You know, you know. He's actually a bigger.
Your motion?
I'd love to continue to the day.
Any further discussion of the motion? Okay, all those in favor? We'll see you in.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for bearing with. Last formal item of this is the approval of the July seventeen. Meeting, uh, the, uh, I submitted a couple of. Uh, edits and errors.
Okay, for the minutes.
Second. Um, all of it. And the. So, uh, we have. Three in favor? Four in favor? And there it finishes. Okay. Danny. If you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jeff. So just a couple of quick updates. Units, um, I'll be back to like, keep that moving right at the moment. Um, the, I think it might. But the state legislature have approved the Oral Homes Act, so be there, embedded in there because they say why. Allowed purchasing dwelling units because of standards. So. We, like a lot of communities, have updated our local where this is being compliant or consistent with that. You're using. We have the core balance, largely in. In the expansion of four year industry. Um, that was the formal of public hearing. Um, the A D U P C, except for going to these, we now have the data, it's like lower than two, uh, space. To allow a little more. Basically updated by that stat. In addition to something, being something that we discussed here anyway, which is, um, having a greater variety of housing, or, you know, you know, the smaller units or. So that's something that I just want to mention. Issue for you in the. Just because there are. In a lot of cases. Yeah, I guess. Still, why? Uh, the. So you also have. Yeah, but well, uh, however, it's not the use that's really a question, right? Were you by a large majority yet? Um, if there was sufficient there. You, but this might be more. We'll get more.
Sorry, Paulie.
No, no, please.
Is there a sense of this will be, uh, modified in districts other than R one?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, just to be clear, the statute really is applied to any district or single family allowed, not just because R one is like the boss.
Right.
It's not entirely district, it wasn't allowed. So we're single family.
So any district or single family allows, yes.
But there are, there are a couple of references that is on the. Yes, I would not, but those are also, you know, that I hear. Uh, the C can go beyond that, wasn't part of the statute, but we have to at least, which we.
And in fact, I thi, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that. Even in the. At the answer residential there is. We'd be able to create an accessory dwelling unit by several.
Agreed, agreed, yes, sorry. Spatiality, if it's not like be allowed to be. Although immediately sitting connected, although, you know, everywhere doesn't replace the dimensional.
So I think what, what the big change would be, and I actually have a quick discussion, but. I think that when we go to a single family to a two family. Changes to the financial standards. But in this case, going to a single family to a single. Especially for. Just the, you know, the single family. So it actually allows more intensive. It was, it's not in terms of buildings.
Units, yes.
And that, and that is. That is by right and correct.
Uh, this is a good way to make a perfectly.
For a larger.
For a large. Right, unless stripping.
So if you were out of West Ham. We could, we could create an accessory community. Create a fifteen hundred square foot. Accessory. Especially.
Right, that right.
And it's all.
So somebody could take. A big rock. Converted to accessory. Yeah, yeah, I think we had that. And so, so we've got. Eighty users.
Yeah, eighty zoning, obviously, at the end of the day. Well, I did also mention, oh, sorry. Um, beside of what is. But having here the. Obviously, um, to having an event basically that is a. Uh, September eleven could be basically a form of kind of the overall. She's like, more formally, it'd be a bit, it'd be a sale that we are. The fall process totally, uh, but this, uh, forum is basically gonna recap a little bit. So. State legislature. Bees is is communication to say, you know. We also have the, uh, the need to have a group like. City and approved by the state in order to be sort of. You want to be able to. Um, will be. Didn't see us. So, uh. All those. New process, but the quick strategy of like, how we could try to. This phase forty two begins a year to, you know, you know, to make progress. So that's summary. So essence, uh, the forum is to go over some of that background. Uh, update people, the public, and also counselors, or else. Uh, understand all those pieces, um, understand where going. Let's say, um, the A D U, even if, you know, even if. Maybe now. Do these, yeah, yeah. Um, and then we'll have the, I'll be, you know, like. I'll let the. We use the spring, this is, you know, the lower will be there. Although, but this stuff there. Do a bit. Um, and then there might be some other pieces there where we talk about. It's like. Uh, but it's largely I think the way the groundwork gives context to those. Series of things that are being done. Where we even, you know, we had every day communities and we had a lot of this. Was only just being of like. It's worth to be you. So. Also. Andy has to do with that. I am going to be invited. To join and because of the points are there, so, uh, we have to go through the whole. Then join us, so, uh, at any rate, if we have a background. We'll be invited to that, uh, that place. Will need only you for a ball of. And, and the other thing I did want to mention was the, uh, the. Oh, it's, it is what is happening. Or the. So. So. Just if you want to take blood, just go to this. It. Here. It's. Well, that. Is. The first one you're gonna see there would be like it's two, this. Different ground, well, have you been talking about. Wow, it's a lot of stuff. But at the first, you'd be able to go to the principal that did that to the R P, so, uh, you'll see on. Hey, the R P, uh, I just don't know whether the certain. You can get there, so, um, Brown School, R P, you'll see the R P itself. You then those. Who definitely. Issue there. Uh, so, and then the, um, and then the three proposals we got from C S I and, you know, team. Uh, say that. Why don't you say? So each of those, if you want to review them, the reason I point that here is even though. So far, we've been largely talking to the city council about disposition of city property and that's. Council of Mayor. Uh, this, you know, people did disposition of property with future, you should be there. It will also be a zoning discussion I imagine here because there is no related today, but it's possible to practice that. Lot of lights, wanting to do my heads up. At times to, you know, review what's in this package here, not only look at the Brown school. Just subset of zones. Last. But also to, uh, look at these proposals and get a little bit what's there. Not to say what it usually is. But what are the usual feature that? What?
It's hoping, I guess, just I think if otherwise. Five more.
Yeah, I mean, it's. One word. Yeah, a lot of good things are gonna happen.
Yeah.
So. Mention that as well, just, you know, that's why. Look at this again, before we got into it, you'll have.
The other thing is. The eighteen drink over here.
Oh, yes. Thank you, sir. Uh, the one that we had. Kmart, the, uh, the city hearing was Kmart.
Yeah.
He bought, he bought. Exactly. That. Wondering what the C. Here, um. Yes, it's here, um, that I will see how well. The, um, um, will be our. I don't know, there will obviously be some, uh, there'll be some sort of cover and notification. Be about this topics, you know, that is owning, uh, probably legal counsel, there'll be some feedback or another, uh. There is a discussion. He brought. But. There is a discussion. Whether or not they, what do you mean? Found the. Development. Or is this zoning? Change. So we're not sure yet whether it's on what feels, whatever. Patient or project here, or whether the planning work. Yeah. Process, we have to be here, we report that. They are going. The plate. Yeah, so I don't think. Looking at the C A. But if they were. Yeah, so you're not necessarily saying that project. I don't know. You guys. Four, yeah, we guys. But this more. You, 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 you have to say. So there is gonna be a. But then. It's a. Well, that's a pretty. Beating a very excited. You know, yeah. You know, plus to go to the game. Yeah, essentially a solidated. All. Disvolting that. Basically, look at the. That you. The way it is. All that stuff is combined with one hearing there, so. I'm mainly letting you know, so you can, you know. Yes, whether it's possible, looking at. Uh, be aware. Sure, get for guys to dangerous yet, be aware of the development group. The A play role. But B, but may also be a document. Going with a zoning, uh, company, what I'm sure that. It's part of the. They should be, um. It, it is important, it seems to me, basically. If even if there's a zoning, that have to come from that, basically important. So. I agree. Develop city, that is for lack of a better explanation, you know, just. Insulated from the statutory provisions of the zoning act or. These statute, which can, at different time, have some holes or what we need provisions. Definitely. If you're, if we are concerned about. But. You might want to. He brought. Well, where. Changes. Or immediate zoning. The only group that makes the walls.
So like, there's a couple of things in that, um. There, in the, if you go to our meeting, um, general, on the eighteenth, you'll see. The draft ordinance is. It has been submitted. But my understanding is that there may be revised ordinance that happens. For the.
Uh, I have not last. But they didn't anyway.
So it is, it, it, it's kind of, so the other thing I want to say is. Some of us have seen. The, the applicants proposed, proposed.
Uh, I think all the members here.
Have they all seen it?
Good.
They all see it. So. What, what, what context can we see?
I said.
Oh, you decided. But it actually happened. I don't know if it made sense.
Oh, yeah, sorry, and I actually. Part of what I think. Speak anyway, and there is not the revised package. Certain that.
Second.
Um, from that, but that was one question, but is there a. And if the is the. So that's the details of what they reference in the whole area to the better. Yeah. D A.
And I think that it would be helpful. In preparation for the clinical treatments.
Yeah.
Which is. Uh, um, to look at that plans. In comparison to this.
Yes.
Because currently, so it's, it's, you know, it's, it would be helpful to. Get a sense of what it'd be, and then they could go outside and. And look at. Imagine what would be there.
Okay.
Yeah, Jamie, yeah.
Yeah, just, first procedurally, I mean, are we being shocked for the kind of. It's developer might like it and they don't like it, they're gonna be able to. Is that the kind of? Is that the?
I can't speak for them, but anyways, that they would prefer, you know. They probably prefer whatever path is the streamlined rather to get to a property that, you know, order magnitude or scale nature. Um, and I imagine that, you know, from a procedural nature, you know, we see this patch with zoning, those can be, you know, take a while, it can be difficult, like create lots of. Um, there may be a thought that, you know, asking one person to be comfortable with just doing the plan and, you know, saying what's. One word. Proper thing consolidated, might be easier than debating with a lot of counselors, a zoning change and, um, that the other party. Well, so I assume that there's a, a sense, you know. Uh, that, um, that the streamlined path is, they can be presented well as a project for the city, meaning it reads a role for the city. Um, but the city, you know, everybody here has their own role as. Of what we play and what we. Um, so.
But, but to your question, a specific question. The ordinance that is for. At this point. Was written by city counselors. Not by the applicant, that stuff in it that is. Totally contradictory to.
Right.
Right.
So I don't think. It's, it would be nice if, yeah. There's some, some, because I don't think, you know, we don't know what the conversation. Between.
Which lines are? Yeah, going back to. Here, the conversation initially started. Zoning has to change, right? I please initially know that, but, you know, what if it was working out or something? Oh, the forty yard did, right, so it's something along those lines, meaning there's an abstract that you use, well, you can't really with, you know, mixed use. But the plate work become the review authority with designer, right, that was kind of the general concept. It migrated to what I'm. I, obviously, we have a larger. Thing. You just. But if it's very, so. I thought. All of those things. Soon they can fit consolidating with one, you know, uh. Be more efficient with timeline, you know.
Yeah, but there's a, this negotiation. I mean, it doesn't.
There's a, yeah, there's certainly is a negotiation. And clearly, you know, it's. I just, you know. You know, whether or not something is open to one body or another. Yeah, is it just the exact. And then the, the V A, um, the counselors feel like if this was only been bypassed and gets part three, why does it's been zoning proposed is. It might be an attention to sort of, you know, parallel against what we can work, but it might also be a concern that some tech. So this is a interesting combination of things, because the sad could also allow the applicant to protect, we go right to the Z B A now. I mean, with this project. Doesn't need the metric letter from our front D V B, technically that file could be made with the Z B A without that, um, it's just something that.
And we got it.
And, and. There's fair part, you know, we're looking to get the best possible of the city overall with.
The, the concern I. Is. This, this site is a very large part of the overall story of. And what really worries me about all of these discussions. Is that he's merely the process. And you've got two city council writing of the zoning. Why is really only. And, and we don't have an idea about. The broader story. Context really wants to be, and I, I think this is a. Very problematic moment right now. What is being proposed is very. On this site, it will impact the entire district. And we're not talking about anything. Allowing. The discussions to be only about. And I, I just, I think we're headed down. We should be ahead of this process and we should be talking about. All this. It's it, because how, how do you have a discussion about, we think there needs to be retail. On the ground floor. This building, because it is what supports a mixed use district and it supports a street environment and a pedestrian environment. Also, what's in front of us has no retail. In fact, it has residential. Um, on the sidewalk next to, to the existing retail. So there are all kinds of things like that about this proposal that are going to, you know. Get glossed over. And we won't be able to do anything because we don't have a view about how this building relates to an overall concept. And, and I'm really concerned that this is gonna be fast tracked. To a conclusion that isn't what the city is really. Right now, it's a building that does not look like it. It's very large, it's very generic, and it does a lot of things at its edges that, that don't do what we're. So I just, I, I really am concerned. And if this goes in the direction of a friendly forty B. And it's entirely an negotiated agreement, none of that stuff.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I said.
Really concerned. No, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, as planned, we potentially get to be pawns in this whole thing, but we have one moment in time to perhaps make a mark. We, we've got like one flash moment to make a mark and we just should be really careful and use it as wise as we possibly can, otherwise, well, it'll be completely out of our hands. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for those who are interested in the timeline, that's. It's clearly just gonna be well, different sense of, you know, what the timeline should be here between different, you know. Or. Those who are willing to. Or area. Or. Which is why, you know. Issues, um, things like that, so these are clearly, you know, extreme amount of density in one slot versus the rest. Okay, people. Um, or, um, or. Is this a. These are. Deciding based on. On criteria. Other than. Yes. One day. Yeah. You know. Whether. The office. Here. Do you?
But the foothold that we couldn't have, so, I'm just trying to hear, we have like next to no. This, but. But the little bit that we have is that we have the need to have a vision or. Express a vision to what a larger. Right, we can't necessarily control this one parcel, but we can actually. Influence what the discussion is about, the district as a whole. And we maybe, this is an opportunity for us, which is gonna be very fleeting.
Yeah.
And it's very easy to miss it if we don't. I mean, I think we should talk about this at our next meeting, I guess, my point, I'd like to come to the next meeting with some thoughts, because I think we need almost like a bear. For the eighteen, in a way that we've never done before.
Yes, it is. An argument about, you know, what this particular. Is.
So how it might fit into something like.
These are the reasons why we are. That's just. A broader.
And we actually. Now that we have, um. Several things agenda before. It's gonna be a hard. I know that. You have.
Be at the end.
Was that?
They'll be at the end.
Well, um, well, we can think about how to work at this agenda, but the. But maybe, maybe we should. You know. If you guys could get together, I don't know, we, we can have some kind of. As, as you say, come with some thoughts. Work together, we gotta look. But the, uh, yesterday, everything, you know. The stuff at the Harvard students. And there are some thoughts in there, but it's not enough. To get, to get us to. And. Maybe. Spend a little bit of time working on that. Report. That was, um, so, so we don't come to a meeting and say, okay.
Yeah. And we could say, like, we have a really. Elegant statements and, and. Try to be as persuasive as possible, still be completely ignored, but at least we'll. You know.
It'd be good to be prepared for a meeting in the fourth, so it can be. And maybe even the housing. All right. Anything else you maybe would like to say about that or anything else? Can you say?
Vote to adjourn?
Same.
All favor. Can there be any horse special on the board?